Yes, this one's great.
Test, test. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council workshop meeting. Tonight, we are meeting to interview four candidates for the at-large vacancy that's currently in place. We conducted a meeting greet from 5:30 to 6:00, and now we're going to be conducting four 30-minute interviews to fill the seats. The council must fill within a 30-day period from the announcement of the vacancy. So tonight, we're going to be starting off at 6:00 PM with PJ Kolnick. PJ, the process for tonight is we're going to ask you to just introduce yourself. We're giving you five minutes, so obviously you don't have to use the entire five minutes. And then from there, we're going to be asking you six questions. So with that, I guess I would just pass the mic over to you. Good evening.
Okay. Well, thank you. I got to meet some of you just in this meet and greet here. And some of you, I feel like I know you better than you think between going to city council meetings and watching you guys on YouTube. So if you don't know it, you're real popular on YouTube. So thank you, City of Englewood, for broadcasting these for us. So my name is PJ Kolnick. I'm originally from Bozeman, Montana. That's where I was born. Lived in Bozeman and went to high school in Helena, Montana, but I went back to Bozeman, Montana for college at Montana State University. Got a degree in civil engineering, largely because I grew up working with my dad. He was an excavation contractor. And so instead of daycare, I got to spend most of my summers, you know, in the trench with a shovel while he was digging. So that was, that was kind of my experience growing up in the construction world. When I, they always say Montana's biggest export is their college grads. And they're right. There's not a lot of jobs there. It's, I'm sure many of you guys have either seen or heard of it. It's a beautiful place, but it's a tough place to find a job. And so after college, I moved out to Chicago. I was out in Chicago for about eight years from 2013 to 2021. Started a job with an engineering construction company there called Burns McDonald. They're, they're based out of Kansas City. But I got involved, my, my first job was really being an engineer for the first six or seven years of my career in the high voltage power delivery space. So working with utilities, both regulated and then kind of unregulated transmission companies that are really across the country right now. They're upgrading and building new power lines for a lot of these different facilities that are either trying to connect renewable energy to the grid or really just update aging infrastructure. A lot of power lines in the country were built back in the, in the 60s. So we're just helping as a company to build those, rebuild those all across the country. Did that in Chicago for about eight years and then my, we moved out here to Denver to be relatively closer to family, working with our, working with the same company. And so I've been here all of two years in, in May. So I'm, I'm one of those, I'm one of those transplants that everybody in Colorado seems to highly esteem. But I, I think that's been a really a benefit for me because it's, especially as I, you know, I, I kind of found Englewood initially just out of convenience, needed a place to live, got here, really started to meet people here and decided that this was a great place to buy a house. So I went from being a renter in this neighborhood to being an owner in this neighborhood. And, you know, I was immediately struck by the permanence of place. A writer that I really like, his name is Russell Kirk, talks about the permanent things and how there's things in society that are anchors for who we are as a community and, you know, really who we want to be as we, as we look back and look forward. And definitely the people in my neighborhood, some of them have been there for multiple decades. They have traditions. They have a sense of connection that immediately made us feel like this was a place that we could be and that we could grow. So yeah, became involved just within my neighborhood. I got involved at least just from the fringes in city council as I observed what was going on over the past two years as my, my neighbor across the street invited me to go with him one night. So I came, I observed and like a lot of things, you, you say, well, I think I take, I could take the next step in being more involved. I care about the issues that you guys are debating through right now and, you know, just the challenges that you have before you over the next two months. As I looked at this position, it, it appealed to me a lot because I don't intend to, you know, use this position as like a launching off point to run for the open seat in November. I really just want to serve the community through this, this open, open gap that you have over the next two months. So that's kind of my goal. And a little bit about me, I don't know, do you guys have any questions? Or is that kind of how the process is going to go?
I think what we're going to do next, Mr. Kolnick, is we're going to go ahead and go through the six questions. Obviously, we have 30 minutes to fill here. So if there is additional time, we may be able to ask some additional questions at that point. So to keep you from, from your head swiveling, we're just gonna, I'm gonna ask the first question. We're just going to go across the room for the six.
Okay.
So Mr. Kolnick, my first question for you is what qualities, characteristics and vision do you believe you have that make a compelling case for your candidacy as the at-large member? And please give any examples where possible.
Yeah. I think, you know, a lot of what I think will be valuable to the council is really just kind of from who I've, who I've been able to be in my professional experience in my day-to-day work. I work, I feel like I have a very, a pretty grounded perspective of some of the challenges that, not only cities, but, you know, I work with a lot of regulated utilities, which really do operate pretty similar to government organizations in a lot of ways. And I got this grounded perspective of a lot of the challenges that come with like funding and executing different capital projects. Englewood, especially like, like you look through the capital improvement plan. There's so many capital projects that the city is dealing with right now. And especially as you like, look at the budget process, you know, and getting that done, you know, in the short span of time that you have. I don't have like some really wild expectations of what needs to happen, but I feel like I've got some really good ways to, you know, speak into that process and be helpful in terms of, you know, taking a, either a construction design or even just a long-term thought approach. A lot of utilities look at their capital programs as in like five, 10, or even 20-year timeframes. So it really takes a, a real long-term perspective and the ability to look at what you're doing as something that may be completed long after you're gone. And so whether it's two months or your term is four years, there's things that you're doing right now that you're trying to lay the groundwork for to be successful in the future. So that's one of the things that, just my professional background. I, I think just like my background is pretty well-rounded and experienced in construction. I've built roads, I've built sidewalks, I've built houses. I actually spent two years in college. I was a, basically it was a co-op for the Montana Department of Transportation. And all I did for two years was design handicap accessible ADA facilities. And I just grew this really deep appreciation for how challenging it is to, not only for like a city or a government, to make a community or just a sidewalk itself accessible, but how much that can change and impact the community. Even in the short two years that I've lived here, I, I'm amazed by the, the impact that especially the Swedish and Craig Hospital has, but also kind of their standing within the medical community. And so many of the people I see walking around the neighborhood have some pretty significant either brain injuries or, you know, physical challenges from which they're trying to recover. And I'm like, man, I really want to see Englewood be the easiest place for people to walk and see people be able to get around as, as much as possible. So that's, that's a bit there. And yeah, it's kind of a long answer to the question, but hopefully it helps.
Thank you, Mr. Kolnick. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Kolnick, for, for coming out tonight, agreeing to an interview. My question for you too, is question number two here. What do you think the city does well or its assets? What do you think could be improved? Do you have particular goals based on these observations?
Yeah. Well, you know, it's, it's interesting. Even in the two years I've been here, I've been really impressed with how the City of Englewood does a good job of viewing the people that live here as its primary asset. You know, you look at, you, you look at the, the brochure that you get, everybody gets every month. And you look at how much programming fills it up at the Englewood Rec Center. And it's impressive because it's saying, it's not necessarily about the facility. It's about how we're bringing these people together and we're putting a lot of time, energy and effort into doing that. And it's cool to see that even reflected in the strategic plan where you're like, oh yeah, community well-being is the first section of it. And there's 13, there's 13 points on it. Like wow, this, the City of Englewood looks at the people as its primary and, you know, the, their most, most valuable asset. The other thing is I think they do well is, just in general, I've, I've been impressed with, you know, the parks and the facilities that they, they have, they maintain and that they're, they're even trying to improve with this upcoming election. It's clear that they're trying to make these spaces for communities and neighborhoods to gather and, you know, make traditions, make memories and be a part of it. Some of the things I, I, what I think could be improved, you know, I was reading through like the, the walk-in wheel program that the city had put together in 2015. And it was interesting that, you know, the last page talks about a lot of, you know, quick, quick hitting things that you wanted to do, whether it's like bike lanes or sharrows or, or different parts. And a lot of those have actually been achieved, but I think there's a lot more that the city could do to make this place, that the city could do to enhance the pedestrian experience. So whether it's continuing with what the, that walk-in wheel program started or just inviting community members, you know, almost nine years after that was authored, to reengage in the process and care about it. I think that would be a really, a really good way to improve the, the city physically, but also just with participatory participation and people get here and how people think about it. So. Oh yeah, the other thing, you guys asked about goals based on these observations. I talked about it a little bit. I'd love to see if there's any, any way to, you know, be a part of the process to enhance that pedestrian experience. You know, bringing that up during city council. I, I also think that, you know, the two main items that really seem to be pressing is working your way through the budget over the next two months, which that could support it in significant or, you know, parallel ways. But also, you know, you still have to work through Code Next and see what that's going to be like. I think there's a lot of things within the Code Next that are parallel as well to what the pedestrian experience in Englewood will be. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kolnick.
Yeah.
Member Woodward. Jim, your mic.
Question number three. Give us an example of a time when you had to work on a team to accomplish a goal and there were vastly different views of that goal or how to get there. Tell us what you did, what was accomplished and what you learned.
Oh, well, thanks, Jim. Yeah, I kind of thought about this when I, I read through the questions. You know, some of the, some of the projects I get involved with just through my work as, as a consultant, they have a lot of different stakeholders. Recent one that I had worked on, well, I guess it wasn't too recent. It was back in 2018. We were trying to basically rebuild a power line within a community in Ohio. And it was a small community. It had been there, you know, long German heritage in that community. A lot of those people could trace back four or five generations. This, this particular power line really needed to be upgraded. So they had to, you know, it was going to be taller, the wires were going to be bigger. It was going to be, you know, a bigger presence and a big chunk of it ran through a section of neighborhood where there was, there was no alley. The only way to rebuild this was they're going to have to tear out people's fences. They're going to have to go back there. They were going to have to do it. And the Utility Commission asked them to consider different routes as well. And so there was another route that they considered that was through like a more rural area, but it was about three times the length. And it was going to be, you know, significantly more cost in terms of materials and just construction. And to add like another wrench in the pile, there was actually kind of an airport that was in close proximity. So that actually limited the height that they could build those poles, which also meant that they had to add a lot more poles. So you start to see these, these dynamics of this project that made it tough because by rebuilding this power line, they were going to enable a significant base for business growth in the area because you're going to have more voltage, more, more capacity for businesses to, especially industrial type businesses to come in and be able to build and operate in that area. You were going to have much more reliable power for not only the people whose yard this line was going through, but also like the whole, you know, city limits was going to have much more reliable power. And so we went back and forth about, you know, the, the pros and cons of, of each route. And ultimately, we, we worked with the client to kind of make justifications for both. And we decided on the route that had to go through the people's backyards. There was, there was a lot of opposition to it. It was, people were, those people, there was, there was probably about 24 houses where they were going to be significantly impacted by that decision. And so I guess the main, the main ways that, I don't know, I don't think we won all of them over. But a lot of what it took was saying, okay, here's, here's what construction will look like. Here's how it'll impact you. Here's a lot of ways that you can visualize what this is going to look like in your backyard, what it's going to, you know, feel like, you know, you, we, we made all these different artistic renderings so they could kind of imagine what their backyard is going to look like with this taller pole and these higher power lines. We had several community meetings where they came and just were able to talk. So I don't know, one of the things I just really learned about it was that, you know, because there was thousands of people that were going to be paying for this project, how do you balance that between the objections of the, this, the relatively small number that were going to be impacted in this kind of very near way? The other thing I learned was that there was a lot of people that, that just wanted to be heard through that process. And not everybody was happy, but there was a lot of people that kind of came to an acceptance of it after just they, a lot of time and effort was spent educating them, showing them, just listening to them in those community meetings. And so you may not win everybody over in a process like that, but if you can listen to them, it really helps. And I, I think I also realized that, I mean, not, not too much like city government, running the utility is a fairly thankless job. Most of, most of you and most of them don't get a lot of praise or thanks until something goes wrong. If you go and look at their Google reviews, I don't know if you've looked at Excel Energy, their Google reviews, they're pretty scathing. I think they have one out of five stars and that's being generous. So I don't, I don't know what the, the City of Englewood, what your Google review is, but yeah, what, what government organizations have to do, what regulated organizations have to do is sometimes thankless, but very necessary. And really at the end of the day, the project brought significant increases in reliability and benefits to a much larger community. So. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Member Noonan Cape.
Mr. Kolnick, thank you for being here this evening. My question is if you can describe what you think are the key responsibilities of the city council role for the at-large district? What kind of time do you think it would take and how would you utilize your time to understand and represent the city well?
Yeah. Well, the way I'm, you know, I'm looking at this position is I've only got, I guess, two and a half months to make as much impact as I can and participate as helpfully and supportively as I can, not only with, with this group here, but for all the citizens of Englewood that I represent. So, you know, it's interesting because the at-large, I, I would be really representing the city as a whole, not necessarily just my district. So that, that's, I think that's important to distinguish in, in my role individually and how that would connect with each one of you and, and your roles. But what I really think the key roles of city council are is, you know, first and foremost, you, you gotta pass a balanced budget that addresses the needs, but also hopefully kind of tracks along with the strategic plan that some of you got to author and, you know, may not even be here for at some, at some stage when it continues to be followed. So I think it's important that, you know, the people that made the plan, hopefully the plan stays in place and, and the back, the budget follows that. I think it's important that you guys continue to, or city council continues to revisit and understand not only the intent of the strategic plan, but, you know, what, what went into that? Why were those decisions made? So I think that's an important role. It's important for you guys to keep tabs on just good governance of the city. You know, from a very logistics and administrative way, city council really has to have some accountability, not for city manager, city administration, city attorney, and speak up when maybe those things aren't going well or as they should. And I think, you know, you, you all, as leaders in the community, your, your role is to set a positive example. Not only for just good relationships amongst each other, but also amongst the staff of the city and hopefully with, with the, all the citizens of, of your district and the city itself. So as far as what I think a time commitment will be, I mean, there may be, you know, a few liaison kind of board commitments that I don't know how I'd step into those or if I would with the short amount of time. But yeah, the, you know, you've got a lot of important meetings on, on Monday nights. I mean, the important meeting. So just really trying to block that out to accommodate the important conversations you have to have over the next two months. So.
Mayor Bertam.
Thank you. And just a quick time check. We have about six minutes or so left.
Okay.
The question I have for you is what two issues are you most concerned about and what ideas do you have for addressing those?
Yeah. So the two issues I'm, I'm most concerned about, and I guess are really the ones that are the most pressing for this body to resolve and come to agreement on over the next two months. And that'd be, one, does your budget, you know, how are we, how are we taking the money of the city? How are we spending that with, in accordance with the strategic plan? Are there adjustments that need to be made? Are there? You, you know, some of these things, especially as you guys have been involved in a lot of capital planning, there's, there's a lot of challenges on supply chain and labor inflation and some of these things where there may have to be some hard conversations within the budget as you look at either keeping things on track, adding things, trying to prioritize what you're trying to do. So yeah, I think that's, that's a really important issue. The next important issue, I, I think, you know, you guys have been really involved with Code Next. I think it's really important that the city council is trying to come to an agreement on and listen to the city on what affordable and attainable housing looks like. You know, with regards to Code Next, I think, I don't know if it's, it comes naturally to a lot of people to really like spatially understand what, what a setback is, what it looks like when, when the bulk plan is changed, what it means like when, when the height of your house is impacted. Or, you know, some of these things that are just very practical that come from my experience working in the engineering and construction world. I, I think, you know, those things need to be looked at, understood and either adjusted or just refined in such a way that they, they make sense so that people can build and do things under it in a way that minimizes questions and hopefully maximizes the quality of life for people that are living here. So yeah, I think just removing inconsistencies where there is either contradictions or just opportunities to enhance, you know, affordable and attainable housing for, for people here in Englewood. So.
Member Russell.
Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Kolnick. My questions for you are, what would you say are three of your greatest strengths? And please provide examples of those in real life. And what would you say are two areas of growth for you personally? And how would being on council contribute to that growth?
Yeah. So I'd say three greatest strengths. You know, I started as an engineer and I enjoyed that. It really kind of was able to refine and build a background within analytical kind of thinking and problem solving. So I think that's really just been a, a strength that I've had for a long time. But I think it's a great, you know, strength to have if you're working on city council and, and working with, with people. I'd say I'm generally an optimist. I think that, you know, we're, we're, we are living in the best time that there ever has been. We're living in the best country in the world and we are, we are very capable and we have tools and opportunities that are, some, some of our, you know, generations before us could have never dreamed of. And so I, I just think that being an optimist is, is, is really useful for when you're thinking about a city and where we're going and what we can be. I also, you know, come from a, you know, I did sales in college. I, I actually do sales for the work I do now. And so I like to think that I'm generally good, generally good at sales sometimes. And I just enjoy meeting people and really transferring energy to them. So however that works. But whether it's optimism or getting on the same page, persuading them to, you know, come alongside what we're trying to do, I think that's definitely a strength of mine. You know, the main area of growth, I would say is, you know, often, especially in the last two years, it's, it's, it can be easy to be comfortable in your own bubble and enjoy the control that you have over it. I really think city council is, is a great way to not only expand my, my view of the community, but also kind of release some control and realize that it's going to take all seven of these members to come to an agreement and to come to really a resolution of the challenges that you have over the next two months. And it's not going to be something that I can, you know, make happen myself. You, you have to work together. And each, each of you in your own way is going to have to release control or the, your own, you know, intrinsic motives as you try to speak for your, your citizens and, and your district and the city overall, the health of it. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Kolnick, you are right at time. Thank you very much for making time for us tonight. We are going to deliberate after the four interviews tonight, see if we could come to a consensus before Monday night, but a final vote would happen on Monday night. So.
Okay.
Again, I appreciate your time. Look forward to speaking to you here in the near future and let you know. I'll restand. So just thank you for your time.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Test, test. Test.
Test, test, test. You're probably hearing it because I'm speaking to it. Anybody else want to try?
Test. Can you hear me now? No.
Okay, that's fine. Welcome. Oh, no problem. Good evening, Mr. Moore.
Hi.
As you can see, we're doing a little bit of shuffling here before we get started. I guess I'll just start off with my preamble. So, Mr. Moore, thank you very much for making time for us tonight. I believe you, you have received the questions ahead of time, but we're going to be asking six questions. Before we get to those six questions, though, we are asking you to provide a five-minute overview or introduction of yourself and keep it as that. So, I'll ask the first question, then we'll just go around the room in order here, so. And with that, I'll keep time here as well. I know that we're about three minutes after the bottom of the hour, so we'll go for 30 minutes here. If there's any additional time at the end, then we can ask additional questions at that point, so.
Great.
Ready to begin, Mr. Moore?
Sounds good, thank you. Well, my name is Joel Moore. I am a seven-year-long resident at Inglewood, Colorado, which I don't know how it happened so quickly, but it's been a great place to be. Contrary to the people who have yelled at me on the street, I am not Joe Anderson, despite the visible similarities.
I'm sure they're only saying good things.
It's been mostly positive, like 55, 45. Let's see, right now I work for a National Nonpartisan Education Policy Center, Education Commission of the States. We work with state governments. I work with New England states, providing nonpartisan, unbiased information to help them make good decisions for their students. Before that, I worked for 11 years with the state of Colorado as part of the nonpartisan legal drafting team for the Office of Legislative Legal Services, so working with the state legislature. And as part of that, served for nine years as the amendment clerk for the Colorado House of Representatives. I've been, like I said, in Inglewood for seven years. I live here with my family and our two-year-old daughter and love taking advantage of Inglewood's wonderful family services and, and opportunities. She's, really loves the rec center, so, yeah, keep all that up and the, and the train. I think one thing that's important to know, well, I guess a couple of things are important to know. I did serve, did have the opportunity to serve one and a half terms on the Budget Advisory Committee from 20, I think, 2018 to 2021, at which point I had a family incident that required me heading out of the state for a while, and so I took a step back from that. So, I'm looking to get back involved with Inglewood government. And I think that this, this, or potentially a different committee or task force appointment would be up my alley. I think one thing that's maybe differentiating me with other folks, I don't have the intention of turning this into a political opportunity. I think that, I hope that if selected, I could, you know, carry forward the city council with civility, with the goals of listening, giving people an ear, and carrying on and allowing the, you know, the next group of political folks to come in after the new election. Of course, I say that now, and maybe I'll fall in love with all of this and the hours, and it'll be a great opportunity, but I think that there is a service opportunity for me to be here and serve the city, serve the city council, and help you all out moving forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. My first question for you is what qualities, characteristics, and vision do you believe you have that make a compelling case for your candidacy as the at-large member? If you're able to provide some examples, that would help as well.
Sure, well, I think it's important to note that both of those roles that I mentioned with Education Commission of the States and with the state legislature are nonpartisan roles. I'm a non-affiliated voter. I make my decisions based on, you know, the, the best knowledge that I have and what I view as people's best intentions and, and vision for the city and how our visions align. I think that that's important to know, that I'm not coming in with any preset agenda. I, I mean, I obviously have beliefs and preferences, but I, I don't, I don't come in tied to any particular policy, policy goals or anything like that. So, happy to always listen. I think the major thing right now is, you know, allowing folks to feel heard. And now that y'all have done a lot of listening also, so I don't want to diminish the work that you've already done on that. Other things that would make me uniquely fit to the role, the Budget Advisory Committee experience did give me good insights into the city and how it works. I know that there have been a lot of changes with that since COVID, with how, where things come from and how it can go out, and so that would require a bit of learning on my part, but it's absolutely something that I can handle. But I do have that, that background with the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Member Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Moore, thanks for joining us tonight. What do you think the city does well or are its assets? And what do you think could be improved? Do you have particular goals based on these observations?
Sure, well, like I mentioned, I think that in talking to friends and family in my neighborhood and around town, there is, I think, a really positive energy around how the city is engaging citizens, how the city is working to provide opportunities for families, the nights out, the fireworks, the, we've got an exceptional library program, exceptional rec center program. Our Parks Department is amazing and deserves all the praise in the world. And I think that it's really created a unique environment in the metro area to have a relatively attainable city with the services that are, you know, best in class around the area, and I think that that can't be overstated. Things that we can work on, obviously, you know, there's been a long-term issue with infrastructure that I know that you all have done an incredible amount of work on, and I know that a lot of grants and money have come in to, to start getting there. I'm looking forward to being able to turn left onto Oxford again one of these days, but we'll get there. But I, it's an ongoing progress, process, and I appreciate the work that's happened in the last few years, and I want to make sure that that continues. I also think that we have incredible opportunities along, you know, being just a block off of Navajo. I think they're in Navajo, Windermere, incredible opportunities for some underdeveloped areas that are near public transportation to, to be developed in the right ways. With, when I say in the right ways, I mean with appropriate infrastructure, with appropriate input and all of these things. I think that there are enormous opportunities for the city to grow and develop also.
Yep.
Member Woodward.
Jim, your mic, sorry.
Sorry. Give us an example of a time when you had to work on a team to accomplish a goal, and there were vastly different views of the goal, or how to get there. Tell us what you did, what was accomplished, and what you learned.
Well, this past summer, I was down in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, to help the Louisiana Community and Technical College System as they sort of debated and revised their rules for career and technical education, programming, funding, all, all aspects of that. And as you can imagine, each school comes at it with its own goals, its own different constituents that they serve, different, different political environments across the state. And even though the goal should be relatively simple, how best can we serve students? That everyone entered into the room with one laser-focused thing that they, they weren't going to leave until that was taken care of. So, we were able to, you know, listen, get all of those out, and find the common areas, the Venn diagrams, where things overlap, where we could find common areas, even if like the specifics weren't necessarily there, this group can work on, you know, how the, how these Pell dollars are spent, how we could, we can find common areas to bring smaller task forces together to work out details that people can agree on and bring back to the bigger group. I think it went pretty well. They did adopt a new set of rules after going to Baton Rouge four times, which was a lot, because you can't fly straight to Baton Rouge. But that's not y'all's fault. So, it was, it was a really positive experience getting folks to allow their voice to be heard and then sit back and listen for the reasons why people had different opinions and where those came from, and I think we were able to do great work because of it. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Member Noonan Camp.
Mr. Moore, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for being willing to serve on city council. My question is if you can describe for us what you think the key responsibilities of the council role representing the at-large district are? And what kind of time do you think it would take to you? And how would you utilize your time to understand and represent the city well?
Sure, I mean, it's, it's my understanding that the at-large is especially focused on the, the city as a whole, and I, I wouldn't be solely, solely focused on my area of town. That is, would be Steve's job, and good, good job. So, it's, I think that it's incredibly important because there are, you know, areas of town that feel, that may feel like they get more attention than others, whether it's the downtown district, the, the hospital district, the city center group, the certain corridors. And it, but the city is, the city is all of that and more, and making sure that everybody is brought to the table, everybody's needs are heard and felt, and that we're, we are working for all of those groups, no matter where in town they are. Time commitment, I once spoke to a former council person who said it was a 10-hour-a-week thing, and I don't think that's accurate anymore. So, I, I, I'm lucky right now to work with a job that has relatively flexible hours during the day, so I do have some flexibility to attend daytime study meetings, that sort of thing. I know that generally the meetings are Monday nights and can stretch into the late evening, or I don't know, if it gets, I don't know if it gets early morning, but late evening at least, so.
Mayor Bertam.
What two issues are you most concerned about? And what ideas do you have for addressing them?
Oh, well, I mean, I think, well, gosh, I think it would be hard to say any, well, not anything other than infrastructure and development being the two biggest concerns. I think that crime and housing are brought into those, both, both the sub-issues. But like I said, I think that the city has done a lot of work after a lot of time where, with deferred maintenance, I guess, with some of the infrastructure over the past several decades. And so, I think that the good work on infrastructure can continue. And I've already mentioned development to a degree. I think that there are ways that we can, can give more opportunity for attainable housing in the city without ruining the character of any of our single-family neighborhoods or without, without damaging those relationships or existing communities as they, as they are now. I know that a lot of that work is going to continue in the next couple of months with Code Next. I've kind of kept up with it, but I would need to do a deep dive to see where exactly everything's left since, like, you know, meetings earlier this spring. But I know that that's one of the big, big to-dos for the next couple of months.
Member Russell.
Good evening again. So, my question is what would you say are three of your greatest strengths? And provide examples of those in real life. And then what would you say are two areas of growth for you personally? And how would being on council contribute to that growth?
Um, let's see, strengths, well, if, if your work believes in strengths finder, like mine apparently does, my number one is maximizer, which I guess the, the short version of that is that I am able to, like, bring together folks' different ideas and compile them and sort of present and improve the final package in a way that is going to have the greatest impact, either functionally or in terms of furthering the conversation, that sort of thing. Think beyond that, the, my current job with Education Commission of the States is in a lot of ways a government relations role. I'm not a lobbyist because we don't, we don't advocate for anything. It's the simplest way to explain that, but I do have a large group of states that I work very closely with, and it requires the, I guess, input is the strengths finder for that one. Requires pulling in a lot of information, synthesizing it, finding patterns in information, and finding ways to communicate those with other folks. I guess, finally, I guess, I think sincerity is something that I, I, I hear I do well. And I think that it's incredibly important because I, I don't feel like I could do anything that I didn't believe in and that I didn't think that was going to be. I mean, obviously, not everyone's going to be happy with every decision that's made, but if I, I'm going to do my best to make sure that I feel that the decision that's made is, is a positive one. And I think that people can see that and appreciate that, and I think that it, I think that that's helped a lot in both my roles with legislature and with Education Commission. For growth purposes, I, we do have a two-year-old at home, so I've, I've been sort of sequestered for a while, so I'm looking forward to getting back into the world a little bit. So, this is, I think, a good kick in the pants for me, whether it's this or, as I mentioned, a different, a different zoning or a different commission or task force down the road. I'd love to get back and serve the community in another way. It's something that I believe in very much. I, I did education-wise, this out of my introduction, I don't know why I did that. Education-wise, I got an MPA from University of Denver, so the, it was a focus in local government. And so, this sort of work is a little bit different from the work I do on a daily basis, but it is where a lot of my interests are. So, I'd like to get back focused on, focused on helping my community and helping grow it into what I know it, it can be and where it could be headed, so, yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, we still have about 13 minutes. Based on the fact that we're giving you 30 minutes here, I'll ask members of council if they have any questions for Mr. Moore. To start with, actually, I guess I'll just ask a question. And I think you kind of mentioned it earlier. How engaged have you been with city council meetings over the past year or two? In terms of what the big issues are that we're taking on?
Um, I, I keep up with the city council newsletter that comes out the weekly. I, I subscribe to the Inglewood Herald and keep up with things through there. And then I allow myself one next-door visit a week to, just to see if I've missed anything important. I know that, I, I feel like I've largely kept up on the big items, especially the, the Code Next as it existed toward the end of last year. Like I said, I, as the debates dis- Like I said, I, as the debates this spring happened, I, I don't know exactly where everything ended up, but would be happy to get geared back up on that. Are you asking what other issues I'm aware of?
No, it's just that, that's a pretty good overview of.
Yeah, it's, I, yeah, after I took a step, the step away from BAC for the family issues, I, I really did take a step away from a lot of things. And so getting back into it now.
It makes sense. Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if you can expand a little bit. You talked about some of your concerns with the city, the things you think that we could work on. What would be big goals or areas of focus that would be important to you when it comes to policy or legislative priorities if you were to serve on city council?
Sure. Well, I think one of the, the single most visible, well, single most visible items will be the redevelopment of city center and the areas around the Walmart and heading into downtown. And I think that there's been a lot of great work on that. But is that, I don't know how much of that involves rezoning and the lease work and all those things. I know that that is a, a major component, a major puzzle piece that hasn't gotten, gotten a solution yet, as far as I'm aware. So I would love to, you know, well, I say, I say I would love to dig in more on that, but I understand this is an eight-week gig, so I also know that that won't happen. So, I mean, beyond that, I, I know that there are obviously always concerns with housing and crime, but I'm really proud of the, the STAR program and the expansion of that. And I would love to see that sort of work continued. I have, I think it's remarkable that I, you know, I personally haven't heard anything awful about our police department. So I, I think that's, that's great. I, I think that there's a level of trust with our community that doesn't necessarily exist elsewhere, and so I'm proud of that. I would love to, you know, continue the, the good energy and the good work that the, the chief and folks have been doing there and stuff on my business, but I'm, I'm proud of them. So, yeah. And sometimes I ramble.
Member Russell.
Thank you. So I know you're on the Budget Advisory Committee, and one of the things that will happen in the next couple of months is we will be approving the budget and there'll be a public hearing on the budget. Do you think that you would be able to step in and look at that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think I would, I would need to, to lean on city staff for some help with it, just to get back into it. But I, I have no doubt that that's something that I can get into. Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I, I know from the time with legislature that everybody leans on the staff. So it's, I, yeah, I appreciate them very much.
Member Woodward.
Thank you. One here that you may have already spoke to. How long have you been a resident in Inglewood?
Bought a house October 2017. So was that six years?
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything further from council? Any questions you happen to have for us, Mr. Moore?
No, I, I appreciate this. I appreciate the work y'all have been doing. I know that it's been a particularly, you know, time-consuming last year. I know that there have been a lot of big issues coming up, so I appreciate all the work that y'all have put into it. And the, the, the listening is incredibly important. I think that from talking to, or from getting to meet the other folks, you got, I don't think you can go wrong. I, I, I would love to do this, but I also, I, I, I understand if it's somebody else that I look forward to working with y'all in a different capacity if that's what works out. Yeah, you've got some good choices before you.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Moore. We are going to deliberate tonight and, yeah, obviously, we'll make a final decision on Monday night. But I do appreciate you taking time for this and also for expressing interest in the position. So thank you.
Absolutely. So you say final decision on Monday night?
So we, we, we're going to try to reach consensus tonight.
Okay.
On a particular member to fill the seat, but then we'll actually take the vote on Monday night.
Sure. Okay. Perfect. Love it. Great. Well, thank you all for your time. Have a good rest of your evening and I'll see you in some capacity soon.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Ms. Prang.
I'm good. How are you?
Doing good. Thank you very much for making time for us tonight. Ms. Prang, I think you're familiar with the process. We're going to be asking you six questions here. We're asking you before we go to those six questions, we're providing you a five-minute introduction. Thirty minutes total for this, for this session. If there's any time left over at the end, then we may ask additional questions and you may ask some questions of us as well.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and keep time here as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. So I'll, I'll pass the mic over to you, Ms. Prang. You can go ahead and get started with your introduction. Sorry.
So I will try to keep my introductory statements brief since I interviewed with all of you not too long ago for planning and zoning. Know many of you over your years of service as well as mine in the city. With that, I'd like to start by thanking each of you for the invitation to interview with you tonight, for the opportunity to meet the other candidates, which all seem like amazing people and I think would do an amazing job in this role as well. And also to some of our members of the public who I've known from around Inglewood forever. My name is Tina Prang. I, I'll start by saying that first and foremost, my role in Inglewood is that of a mother. I have three children that I've raised here. They all have come through Inglewood schools. They're all amazing individuals. I hope to one day see them serve their community, as I believe that that's an important attribute to model to our children. I ha, I'm a resident of Inglewood for 23 years, to answer your question, Jim. I love Inglewood. This, I, I moved here from Albuquerque, New Mexico and found home. I love the Four Seasons. I love the robust improvements that have occurred in Inglewood, all of the new restaurants, although we could get a few more that are not just Mexican. I'd like to see some Thai food. We, we just have so many amazing opportunities for engagement for our citizens in the city, those of which I engage with regularly with my children. We love to go out to eat here. We love to go to the parks. I love the fact that my children can feel safe to longboard down to Duncan Park and I don't have to worry about her safety meeting her friends there. It's a great place to live. There's a lot of work to continue to be done. Development in the city is needed and how we approach that is a tender topic for many. So I, I look forward to perhaps having the opportunity to have those discussions alongside each of you. I work for the state of Colorado. I am an accountant with the Behavioral Health Administration and have worked there for 15 We recently became the Behavioral Health Administration, used to be the Office of Behavioral Health. And so in my role, I serve as the team lead for our accounting team. I personally am assigned well over $200 million worth of contracts for which I assist in contract monitoring, pay all the invoices and do fiscal management for. Part of those duties include the monitoring of the encumbrance associated with those contracts. All of those encumbrances or many of them have blended funding streams. So we're talking general fund, cash fund dollars, federal dollars, all of the rules and regulations that come either federally or from the state on how those can be expended and allocated. It's a huge task. It's a heavy lift. We're still, you know, wading through becoming a new agency and all of the changes. We've had a mass exodus of, of staff with the changes that have come, but it's very exciting work, very fulfilling. And then I, I think that's it overall in general, unless you have questions for introductory comments, we can move into the questions. Or we can open up to public comment. Just add some humor to the situation.
Just get right to it, right? My question for you, Ms. Prang, is what qualities, character, system, vision do you believe you have to make a compelling case for your candidacy as an at-large member? And please provide examples where possible.
Okay. I hope you don't mind, but I'm going to read the notes that I took because I wander sometimes as I'm answering. It just helps keep me focused on the points that I want to make. So for personal competencies and vision, first and foremost, I would say preparedness. I highly value being prepared for meetings. It is imperative to review materials ahead of meetings, to ask questions, request further information and to be able to have robust dialogue with fellow council members. Secondly, transparency. Council should always strive toward transparency. Oftentimes, an honest answer is not well-received. However, the commitment to honesty creates trust in the long run. In my role as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner, as well as prior school board experience, I was willing to push where I felt needed and to secure the best input and to assure the public heard the dialogue. Lastly, I would say vision. I envision a unified Inglewood in which all voices are heard and where differences of opinion exist and the variance is honored.
Member Anderson.
Evening, Ms. Prang. Thanks for joining us. My question for you, what do you think the city does well and what do you think could be improved? Do you have particular goals based on these observations?
Okay. I have to scroll to find that one. What question number is that? Is it five?
That's question number two. Two.
Two.
Yeah, we're just going through order.
Okay. The city has many rich assets and is actively encouraging growth of engagement with those assets. The city has increased its ability to outreach to stakeholders of the city. Whether it's discussions on homelessness, population density, or how to address the floodplain, the city is committed to securing input from interested parties to inform important decisions. What do I think could be improved? I think while you do have a robust process for budgets each year, I think a deeper dive into that process and how resources are allocated is needed on an annual basis. The input from planning and zoning on the capital improvement plan is a great tool currently used, allowing city staff time to compile additional information requested by boards or council. So that information is disseminated ahead of meetings allows for further dot, fuller dialogue and better decision-making. Goals that I have would be fully digesting meeting materials ahead of meetings and sending questions to city staff ahead of meetings is a practice I've maintained for years. I would encourage all members to use the same method and assure a request to postpone if the conversation is made, if not, all information is secured in advance. Also, assuring all conversation affecting the public is held in public and allowing for public comment is advisable. There are times when information from experts outside of city staff is necessary, as well as studies of similar issues in comparable cities is also needed.
Thank you.
Number Woodward.
Okay. Question number three. Give us an example of a time when you had to work on a team to accomplish, accomplish a goal. And there were visual or vastly different views on the goal or how to get there. Tell us what you did, what was accomplished and what you learned.
Okay. My role as an accountant for the state provides many, many examples of this. In my role as an accountant of the Behavioral Health Administration, I am responsible for closeout of each fiscal year. This entails contract monitoring, closing encumbrances and submitting accruals for all opening encumbrances rolled into the new fiscal year. With over 300 contracts, many of which have associated encumbrances with multiple funding lines, attention to detail is vital. Each year, the central fiscal unit with the, within the Colorado Department of Human Services provides two templates, one for documenting accruals and the other for marking whether encumbrances should be rolled or lapsed. For years, our fiscal unit at the BHA negotiated to use one template, template for both activities. After meeting internally to gather a plan to present to Central CDHS, our team was able to convince the central accountants to use the one combined template. This required me to compile columns and rows from each to meet the needs of each document. Once that was accomplished, a report was pulled to assure all 600-plus lines of funding was accounted for in a combined document. From there, I created a Google Doc for our accounting team to utilize to mark accruals for their assigned contracts. This was a working document in which I pre-populated all fields and staff assignments so that staff members were able to find and document their assignments efficiently. My supervisor and I would review each line accrued and make adjustments where necessary. Once the final draft was approved, we sent a final version to central accounting by the assigned deadlines. The first year we did this, our error rate and need for post-submission adjustments went down by 70%. All parties were satisfied with the new approach, approach, and we enjoyed years of successful submissions using the method created by myself and the BHA accounting team.
Great. Thank you.
Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you for being here and for being willing to serve. Can you describe for us what you think the key responsibilities of the council member role at large is? What kind of time do you think it would take? And how would you utilize that time to understand and represent the city well?
Okay. The council role is representing at large is meant to be a voice that represents the whole of the constituents of the city. This includes business, entertainment, citizens' needs and partnering strongly with stakeholders such as the school district. This council member should be in regular attendance at meetings, create communications to constituents outside of meetings, and solicit input on matters discussed at council meetings. Sometimes this requires a conversation in the aisle at the grocery store or a cup of coffee with friends from the neighborhood to assure the council member is representing a diverse array of opinion. The time commitment can be large for an at-large council member. However, knowing your own limits and creating balance between private home life and public life is very important. Keeping a calendar, keeping structured notes of issues needing follow-up and carving out special, specified hours to work on city matters each week allows a member to allocate enough time to each area of their life with more precision. I live, workshop and play in Inglewood. I've raised three amazing children in Inglewood. I know how to use, utilize time outside of the home to my advantage to assure I am hearing the voices that need to be heard and I am able to show up to meetings well-prepared.
Mayor Partem.
Thank you. What two issues are you most concerned about and what ideas do you have for addressing them?
All of my involvement on planning and zoning gave me so much information to be able to answer this. So first and foremost, development within the city. The updates to the Unified Development Code, now referred to as Code Next, provided new options for development in the city. At the Planning and Zoning July 11th and July 25th meetings, many citizens came out to express support as well as concerns regarding the updates. Planning and zoning did an amazing job of hearing public comments for two and a half-plus hours between each meeting. Holding robust discussion and requesting for amendments to the updated code, this allowed a majority vote recommendation to be sent forward to city council for discussion in an eventual approval. One of the amendments specified a need to keep the current definition of owner occupancy as well- as well as to define the term household. I look forward to working with council to set up a task force to research and address how occupancy and household definition can be updated to address affordability and attainability of housing in Inglewood. I have concerns that our current definition is not inclusive of multi-generational needs as well as the needs of refugees and immigrants to live with family members that have lost all in their home countries and seek safety and the ability to build resources for their families via living with several generations of family members in one location. Additionally, at last evening's P and Z meeting, I addressed the need to expand the definition of household to include children of up to four unrelated adults living in a home. Fellow Commissioner Martinez also astutely brought up the fact that occupancy and definition of household has historically been used to discriminate against those vulnerable persons in our country. Secondly, infrastructure. Another pain major point of concern with the public is the city's ability to support new development with hardy utilities and roads and other infrastructure needs. I will work with council to request further studies as to the current needs, what infrastructure updates are needed to support needed development and to assure the budgeting process includes a timeline in which updates will be made. The city needs to allocate resources to areas of highest priority and the tiered method of looking at infrastructure improvements alongside other needs is incredibly helpful. I bring a deep understanding of various funding streams as the contracts through the BHA include funding from state general fund, cash funds, federal grants, match requirements, and associated timelines in which dollars can be spent. My ability to analyze funding sources has increased within the 15 years I've worked at the BHA and I believe this will be a great access asset to council.
Member Russell.
Good evening again. My question is, what would you say are three of your greatest strengths? And provide examples of those. And what would you say are two areas of growth for you personally? And how would being on council contribute to that growth?
First area of strength would be a growth mindset. I am continuously striving to learn during my tenure as school board, as a school board director, four of which I served as board president. I learned a tremendous amount about public education, the needs for a strong partnership with the city, legislation affecting funding, and the needs of individual students. After taking a much-needed break, I ventured into applying to serve as a planning and zoning commissioner. The school district built all new buildings during my tenure on the school board and learning about the floodplain drainage and infrastructure updates needed to work with the city's aging infrastructure was a huge learning curve. Short of that, I had a large learning curve and still learn new language and statistics to inform my decisions, decision-making with the planning and zoning commission. Secondly, I would say service to community. This is a value I hold dear. It was modeled to me by my grandparents. I model it to my children and I believe a thriving city is full of constituents willing to serve. When we come together to create our dream city, we get the best results. This is something I will continue to promote and always through my service on council. Lastly, consistency. I show up to meetings. I am prepared. I believe all voices matter and especially seek out those that differ from my life experience. What we do consistently becomes habit. Habit becomes reality. I will give my all, create balance in my life and be informed when I make decisions. I will consistently communicate the rationale behind my decisions as well as council's decisions as a whole. I will consistently attempt to bring those with different perspective to the table to discuss how we can get to consensus or agree to disagree. And most importantly, I will support the decisions of the whole of council even where my individual decisions were not aligned. Areas for growth. My understanding of both short and long-term development of a city is an area of opportunity for growth. I will continue to study how other cities are facing their own housing crisis and what best practices can be brought to Inglewood. Secondly, I will continue to grow my understanding of the floodplain affecting Inglewood and how we can assure that no further deaths occur to oversight of infrastructure supports. Long-term vision and planning is needed to ensure the safety of our citizens. I want to be part of that solution.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Prang. Are there any additional questions for members of council? I've got about 11 minutes. Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you. You mentioned at the beginning of your introduction, I believe you said that development can be a tender topic in our community. Can you share a little bit about how you view the topic of development in Inglewood?
Sure. As I stated, I'm still learning a lot through my short tenure on planning and zoning. During some of our discussions, not only was there a great benefit to the contractor that was hired in the the meeting materials and presentations provided to commissioners, but also we had individual commissioners that did outside research on their own and shared that with the full commission, one of which was the AARP. Believe it or not, has a great presentation on development on definitions of household and occupancy, et cetera, on ADUs. And that document was just full of rich resources on cities throughout the U.S. that have been facing this issue and what their solutions are. I was surprised to find that some of the cities, Beaverton, Oregon, which is where my daughter lives, was a comparable city to us. And so I just think that we can continue to resource to other research such as that to inform our decision-making while assuring that we're continuing to listen to the voices of the public who don't agree with the updates to Code Next. You know, I, I received some feedback after one of our meetings where I was told that we were infringing on First Amendment rights and there was a big ruckus after the meetings. Totally untrue. Everybody was heard. I think we had one woman raise her voice once. Short of that, our chairperson, Mr. Hagerty, did an excellent job of facilitating public comment, giving everyone their time, keeping us on task. And, you know, due to some of that public comment, our discussion then led to the four amendments that you now see before you or will see before you at your upcoming council meetings. We directly addressed some of those density issues and cleared up some of the question marks around ADUs. The dialogue directly reflected some of the question marks that the public still had, and I think that that's just incredibly imperative to make sure that the public feels heard even when we don't like what they're saying or even when they yell. It's, it's, I mean, we want to have a level of decorum in meetings, but it's a very emotional topic of discussion and I think we should allow space for some of that emotion within reason. You're welcome.
Any further questions from members of council? If not, Ms. Prang, do you have any questions for us?
I don't really. I mean, I guess only, you know, what is the timeline that you're looking at for decision-making? To notify applicants and I did see that it's anticipated that the new member would sit on Monday's council meeting.
Right, so that's, that's basically the timelines. We have 30 days from the announcement of the vacancy. So we are going to deliberate tonight, hope to come to consensus tonight. And ultimately come to a vote on Monday night.
Okay.
So.
So should applicants be present on Monday night in anticipation of that vote?
So, well, that's a good question. So yeah, I guess. Yeah, we, we are going to have to communicate that aspect of it because I'm we may come to consensus tonight. But obviously the vote can change on Monday night. So to only have one person there on Monday night may not be ideal, I guess, in a sense. So I guess it could be still very fluid, I guess, within Wednesday and Monday. So I guess that's something that we will have to discuss as well over the next five days. So, or well, we'll discuss that tonight, but what I'm saying is that decision won't be made until Monday. Yeah.
I will be there in the audience.
Thank you for bringing up another issue that we may have to discuss as part of tonight. So.
A lot of details in the planning for that.
Perfect. Anything else, Ms. Prang?
No, just thank you for the opportunity. It was really lovely to be able to get to know each of you a little bit better this evening, get to see some faces I haven't seen in a long time. Prepare Mayor Sierra with my potential upcoming questions, incessant question asking. Hope that he's receptive to that. And it, yeah, it was just really nice. It's nice to see at least a member of the public here tonight. The other candidates are just really seem to be wonderful people and I think would serve this position very well.
Thank you, Tina.
Good luck in your discussions and your decision-making.
Yeah. Tina, thank you very much for your time tonight. I appreciate that you applied for the position and yeah, we look forward to continuing this dialogue here in the near future. So thank you again.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
I got you out of here.
Don't forget your bag. Don't forget your bag behind you.
Seven minutes earlier. Thanks again.
Thank you. We're ready. Let's go. Is Brenda out there? Okay. I was realizing that she said she was going to go home and come back. Yeah. No, we're just powering through. Just going to power through.
Just going to power through it. Okay. Let me know when you want me to start.
No, actually, so I'll just go over overview. Brenda, thank you very much for making time for us tonight. We're going to be asking you six questions, but before we get to the six questions, we're allowing you five minutes to provide an introduction of yourself. We're giving 30 minutes total for this interview. If there's any additional time remaining at the end of the six questions, we may ask additional questions. You may be able to ask additional questions of us just depending on how much time we have left, but I'll keep time up here. I'm going to see if I can actually stop it this time and not actually ring during your presentation. But when you're ready, you can begin, Ms. Upka.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me and giving me this opportunity. I feel very honored. Very lucky to be one of the four. That that's really great. So thank you very much for your time again and and the staff's time as well. So I'll tell you, some of you know a little bit about my legacy, my story and how I got here. You know, I have a family that goes all the way back to 1910. My grandmother's on the census. She was four years old at a house at 3983 South Cherokee. It's not there anymore. And she would come back 30 years later or so to raise my dad and his brothers and sisters at 2838 South Clarkson Circle. And that's my dad's side of the family, right? It's a circle. My mom's side of the family. Doris Beeson went to Inglewood High School. She's a 1938 graduate. She met Ray Woodward, no relation. And they lived at 4226 South Broadway, which is not there anymore. He built the house at 4,800 South Grant. He also built his mother a house at 4775 South Alady. And they eventually moved to 4980 South Grant where they raised my mom and her brothers and sisters, including Kay Howard. Some of you might know her. And I lived there for the first two years of my life until eventually my parents had my brother and sister and we moved out to the burbs and I went to, I was very lucky. I got to go to Cherokee High School. And when I graduated, my mother told me that I should be an engineer, that that's something I would do, but I said, I don't want to do the math. I don't want to do that. So I went to a junior college. I went to Rappel Community College and I took one of those career assessments and it told me I should be a teacher. So I pursued that for a couple of years as an English major, transferred to CU, really wasn't jazzed about it at all, but I took a class called Politics and the American Novel. And I was jazzed about politics, really enjoyed the study, moved my major to that and began a career towards pre-law. I did an internship at the Denver District Attorney's Office and I assisted the investigator and the victim advocate and that was during the Takeo Loretta Heights assault. Some of you older people might remember when some thugs beat up some students at the university and that was the first test of Denver's racial intimidation law. But while I was there, I found out that the cost of law school was very high and the outcome for a district attorney or even a defender was very low. So I didn't want to invest in it. I ended up being an investigator for insurance fraud. I was very good at finding people and finding their assets. But part of the job was also doing surveillance of people committing fraud and I was very bad at that. I got picked up by the cops all the time and they're always rolling up on me. Eventually though, I found a job at Quest Communications where they needed a fraud analyst in technology. And that transitioned to a career in as an engineer. So the moral of the story is that you should probably listen to your mother to begin with. And I'll leave. That's, that's my introduction. I think you all know that I've served on various boards and I bought my house in 2000. And I just enjoy being a part of this community.
Ms. Upka, thank you very much for that. I'll ask the first question. Question is, what qualities, characteristics, and vision do you believe you have that make a compelling case for your candidacy as an at-large member and please provide examples where possible?
Okay, thank you. I have a demonstrated passion for public service. It's exemplified in my experience as a member of various boards and organizations. I have a documented commitment to the well-being of constituents that drives my decisions and actions. As a council member, I expect to encounter various challenges and issues. In my professional career, I have a proven ability to analyze problems, consider multiple viewpoints, and propose practical solutions. I have proven leadership skills. I've taken a leadership role in advocating for policies, initiatives, and changes that align with the needs and interests of the community, such as when I sat a petition and presented a petition for a solar analysis towards solar access of homes in relation to the Code Next. I also have a role, a leadership role at Inglewood Unleashed that's been very successful and I'll expand on that later. I have ethical integrity. When members of the community express confusion or share a rumor or general concern about a council or city action, I always seek to find the answer. I'm adept at using the search function in the city meetings portal. I use it a lot. And I reach out to council members for answers and sometimes city staff. Truth and integrity is very important to me. I have a collaborative attitude. City council requires teamwork and cooperation to achieve goals. As a member of planning and zoning, I have a proven ability to work with others, build consensus, and find a common ground which is critical. I'm actively engaged in the community. I've demonstrated by my participation, participation in four boards and commissions, actively involved in my community and understanding its diverse needs. And these concerns have helped me make informed decisions that benefit your constituents. And I have a solid knowledge of local issues, a strong understanding of local government policies, regulations, and issues specific to Inglewood that is essential for making informed decisions and representing the community effectively. I have a grasp of budgeting and financial management. It will never be as good as Steve Ward's, but it is crucial for understanding the economic implications. As a member of planning and zoning, we reviewed the capital budget over two separate nights. So I have that coming in to any, to your upcoming business. I have civic knowledge, a well-rounded understanding of local, regional, and national government structures as well as political processes which help me navigate the complexities of public office. That is my quest. That is my answer for that.
Thank you, Ms. Upka. Member Anderson.
Good evening, Ms. Upka. My question for you tonight is, what do you think the city does well? And what do you think can be improved? And do you have particular goals based on these observations?
Inglewood does something very well and that is that it's invested in the parks, the green spaces, Pirate's Cove, the golf courses. All of this provides residents with opportunities for leisure, exercise, social interactions, and contributing to a higher quality of life. It is a very good asset. The city also does well with investing in the library and the arts program, which enrich the lives of residents towards promoting lifelong learning which enrich the lives of residents towards promoting lifelong learning and creating a downtown destination. And I hope we're going to keep working on a downtown destination. I'll draw on that as we go on. What do I think they could be improved? I think every city struggles with enforcement and Anglerwood is no exception. Angle Fix has turned out to be a very good tool for communication and tracking issues. Issues that are easily remedied are well-tracked in the Angle Fix app. But some tickets tend to languish past 30 days. And that might be necessary, but citizens aren't given a kind of expectation of when they might be resolved or when they might get a status about them. For instance, we've had some short-term rentals that expired in March. So, you would think by August, they should have a court date, but we don't know. There's just no expectation of what the time is. How much, how much time do we give someone to become current with their licensing or current with submitting a permit for a fence? So, we could do better at that. We could do a little better with departments maybe not being so siloed. When I was before you in the hearing about the UDC, I lamented that we didn't have the building department involved as much as I would have liked to. Now, we're gonna have some discussions about occupancy. And I think the fire code kind of enters into that. Whether or not you can have 20 people in a building is, is not just determined by our, our Title 16, but it's also determined by our fire code. And we don't, haven't seemed to, departments are siloed. So, we really haven't talked to other people outside of community development about this. So, what would I do? Well, I'm not, I would say that the next, what I would wanna segue to further on down is creating this downtown destination. Now, I'm very concerned about whether or not, speaking of siloed, whether or not everybody is talking in the downtown of Florida to the owners of the other malls, Big Lots and Hobby Lobby. I have concerns that it's, that all the parties may not be involved. I stopped at the booth, I thought, at the, at the Anglerwood Market, where they were just trying to gauge, the downtown Denver, downtown authority was trying to gauge what kind of events they should have. And they wouldn't talk to me about anything else. But all they had on the table, all they had on the table was a giant QR code as their materials. And I said, "I think it's a good idea for you go to the Malle Rec Center, because senior citizens aren't gonna know what to do with this giant QR code." So, I have concerns about how they're conducting this development. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Upka. Member Woodward.
Give us an example. Of a time when you had to work on team to accomplish a goal and there were vastly different views of that goal or how to get there. Tell us what you did, what was accomplished and what you learned.
Right. Well, you remember two years ago, Anglerwood changed the off-leash dog ordinance. And there was a leadership that had been on the task force at that time. And Barb Chumley and I met with them, Barb Chumley being the original creator of Anglerwood Off Leash. And we met with them and as a group, we all decided that we would continue to encourage citizens to speak at council, but also try to improve the relationship with Pirate U Sports and the Parks and Rec staff. So, the first thing I did was I met Alan McGirl for Drinks, the Pirate U, Pirate U Sports leader. And we started off with a good relationship and he told me kind of his expectations and what he would like to see. Shortly after that, I got an email, there was a Facebook post from Pirate U Sports complaining about dog poop at Miller Field. Now, that's not an off-leash park, but I didn't take the ad attitude. Rather, I walked over to Miller Field and I picked up the dog poop. And then I put it on social media that, "Hey, I got your back. We picked it up." I didn't, haven't heard one complaint from Pirate U Sports since. Then, a little bit after that, I, and I get emails from Parks and Rec, but not very frequently. I got a email from a former staffer at Parks and Rec that said that there had been complaints about dog poop at the Northwest Dog Park and Bates Logan Park. Again, I could have taken the stance as the former leadership did of one of just, "It's not our problem because that's not our park." But instead, I got in the car, I went in Bates Logan, I walked up and down the park looking for any dog poop. I talked, there was a, a group of preschoolers there with their, with their teachers and I asked them if they saw anything. And I reported back to Parks and Rec that actually mostly, most of it was goose poop. And you know, I've never heard from them much since. So, basically, what this means is that people just wanna feel heard and valued and respected. Same thing when they reached out to me about the holes at Jason Park. Apparently, a dog, dog was digging. Now, the former leadership would simply say that that could be coyotes. That couldn't be us. You know, too, that's the kind of thing where you just don't, you just deny the blame. But instead, I use social media. And one of our very nice citizens, Randy Johnson, he's a member. He went down there and he took some filter and filled it up. And we haven't had a complaint since. So, again, I just don't think the assignment of blame is really where a leader needs to go, but rather, if you just answer the call, you, you'll find that, in fact, I know that you've had very few, if any, complaints. It's been very, the temperature's been turned down quite a bit, hasn't it? Since we just said, "Hey, we'll, we'll take care of it." So, I'm, I'm really pleased with, with the way that's gone, to be honest. That's all I have for that.
Member Noonan Kim.
Ms. Upka, thank you for being here this evening and for applying to serve on city council. My question is if you can describe for us what you think the key responsibilities are for representing the district at large as a city council member? What kind of time do you think it would take? And how would you utilize your time to understand and represent the city well?
Right. Well, I'll cut to the chase about time. I've already been able to dedicate time to planning and zoning. And my job, I don't have to travel but once a year. But as far as the key responsibilities go, it is a legislative and policymaking role. Council plays a crucial role in approving the city's budget, allocating funds for various departments, programs and services based on the community's needs and priorities. Overall, the municipal council's primary responsibility is to represent the interests of citizens who have elected them, making decisions that positively impact the community's well-being, growth, quality of life. Council members act as advocates for their constituents by listening to their concerns, opinions and feedback, and then voicing these perspectives during council meetings and discussions. Council members actively engage with the community through public hearings, town hall meetings and other events to gather input. Council members assist residents with issues, questions and concerns related to municipal services, policies and regulation, helping to address and resolve problems on behalf of their constituents. Council members assist residents with issues, questions or concerns related, sorry, that's, let me go back. Council members to participate in strategic planning to envision the city's future, set goals and develop comprehensive plans that guide the city's growth and develop over time. Council members collaborate with fellow council members, city staff and community stakeholders to build consensus, negotiate agreements and find common ground on issues. And council members ensure transparency in government actions by making decisions openly, sharing information with the public and being accountable for their decisions. In times of emergencies or crises, council members may be involved in coordinating response efforts, ensuring public safety and allocating resources appropriately. And again, like I said, I've, I already set aside time as a member of planning and zoning twice a month. And my time is also spent reading a very large document. So, I'm very used to time away, time in addition to my daily job.
Mayor Portem.
What two issues are you most concerned about and what ideas do you have for addressing those issues?
The two issues I'm most concerned about is housing challenges and crime. I worry for citizens that lose, that lose their housing and find themselves in a crisis. So, often we talk about the homeless as if they're previously living outside the city and came into Anglerwood just to be homeless. It is true, we have transients, those who travel on the light rail and hook up with other people and may abuse drugs, but very often, we see residents posting on Nextdoor looking for housing, scrambling to find housing because their rent has been increased or their home has been sold to a new owner. And these are verified people who live in the neighborhood because Nextdoor verifies residents using their mobile phone billing address. Since they are Anglerwood citizens, I think we owe them a solution. Further, if we wanna support local businesses, we need to help those businesses secure a local labor supply. It is the cost, if the cost of living is too high, then Anglerwood will only house those who already have a means to support themselves, either because they secured housing years earlier with a lower mortgage or they are employed with a higher earning job. Small businesses in Anglerwood do not often pay high wages unless you work at the hospital. So, I support housing alternatives that encourage remodeling instead of scraping for a luxury unit. I am very concerned about gentrification. Accessory dwelling units offer an alternative to customary housing units, taking the form of basements, living units above the garage and detest units or tiny houses built in the backyard of an existing home. In this new housing code, homeowners can leverage ADUs in R2 and MUR districts thereby keeping an affordable housing stock intact. So, crime is very concerning to me. Most cities will admit they need more police officers on the beat. And Anglerwood is no exception. Anglerwood needs money to hire more police officers at any cost. So, Anglerwood needs to increase sales tax revenues. While they do increase year over year around 3%, we could increase these revenues with the downtown development. And that is why I think council needs to press on city staff to collaborate with DDE and all commercial property, all the commercial property owners to get that moving along.
Member Russell.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Upka. My question are, what would you say are three of your greatest strengths? And please provide examples. And then what would you say are two areas of growth for you personally? And would being on, how being on council would contribute to that growth?
Thank you. I'm adept at advocacy and negotiation. I advocated for my community's interests, build support for proposals and find compromises when needed, as an example on UDC. As some of you recall, I came here with a petition that would require builders to perform an analysis to make sure that the sun didn't block out them after a two-story or larger build. But I got, the pushback I got was that a solar analysis requirement further complicated the process. And there just frankly wasn't any political will. Our existing code is operating under the old, complex bureaucracy of regulations. So, this was seen as more regulations. But city planners did listen and they did listen to the community feedback in the open forums they had. So, the new code is adjusted, has adjusted the bulk plane, the setback and the lock coverage requirements and tailored them to specific neighborhoods, encouraging building separation, fostering better lighting and protecting privacy. So, I saw that as a compromise. And I do feel like we've come to take both extremes and we've kind of found a middle ground. That's the first thing I do well. The second thing is I'm good at learning new things. I was very fortunate for the UDC experience. I learned a lot about both sides of the debate. Like I said, solar analysis, but also middle housing. It's been a wonderful opportunity to absorb all of the issues regarding housing and affordability. And finally, my best, my other greatest strength is I am flexible and adaptable. As you see, cities are very dynamic and constantly evolving. I have a willingness to adapt to these changing circumstances and consider new perspectives, just as I did, which is valuable in addressing emerging challenges. Now, areas for growth. I could be more patient and not be so quick to respond, but I don't like to procrastinate when I have something to do in front of me. I tend to react quickly without taking the time to formulate the best answer. And I need, I'm working on that both in my professional career and my personal career. And my communication. I have to remind myself to just pick up the phone and call someone. I, again, I'm real, I'm busy at work and I like the idea of documenting what I'm saying. Plus, I've got a computer in front of me and I'm chatting with people and I'm emailing people. And I had a project manager say to me just last week, you know, the emails were going back and forth, back and forth. He said, "Why don't you just call her?" I said, "Well, okay." And I did, and that's always a good outcome for me. And I just need to remember to sometimes do that. And I will take a cue from Steve Ward that sometimes it's best just to reach out to people and have some coffee. But council, I always work, council work always involves a learning curve. And a commitment to personal growth and continuous improvement is important. I would engage in training, seeking mentorship and actively listening to the constituents towards developing these qualities over time to become an effective city council member. And that is all I have.
Thank you so much for that, Ms. Upka. Any questions for members of council? I see Mayor Portem start us off. We have about six minutes, by the way.
I, you know, I think the city staff said that you were gonna talk about this later, but not come to a decision. And then we would know, I think, on the 16th. Was that it? No, what's the?
Actually, Ms. Upka, I think Mayor Portem has a question. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's question for us. I thought I was supposed to ask questions.
Well, we'll start with the question from Mayor Portem and then we'll.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
But I could get to that here in a second as well.
Yeah, just one question, Brenda. We've, we've received some communication in regards to some of your social media activity. What, if anything, would you do differently relative to social media if you received the council seat?
I would probably just remove myself from it. You know, I really am just very passionate about getting the truth out and the facts out. And I was also very bad, very passionate about defending the process, which was required of me as UDC. And some people are very passionate about, passionate about twisting that, using it against me. And that's too bad, but that, that's really where my heart is. And I, and if I was on council, I'd probably delete my account. I think we're done.
Thank you. Member Russell, did you have a question? Oh, okay. I don't see any further questions. What was the question you had, Ms. Upka, regarding the process or?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. Don't worry. Do you have anything?
No questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, Ms. Upka, thank you for your time. We're gonna deliberate after this. We'll probably take a short break. We're gonna look to you, get to consensus tonight. And if, you know, regardless, we're gonna be voting on Monday night for the open seat. So, we'll talk about that entire process here coming up. But I do appreciate you making time for us tonight and thank you very much for your willingness to serve. So, thank you. All right, everyone. Do you guys wanna take a 10-minute break? Meet back up at the top of the hour, 8 o'clock? All right. Thanks, everyone. All right, members of council, if you're able to be seated. Are you coming back? Are you coming back to us? Okay. I'm just kind of curious. All right, members of council. All right, everyone. So I want to thank all 19 individuals for placing their names to fill the vacancy for the at-large position. I believe we received four great candidates tonight in order to make a decision. Obviously, we're on a time crunch because we do have just 30 days to appoint a new member once the vacancy became known. So I wish we would have had time to interview more people, but I am happy with what we've received tonight. We're just going to deliberate, I guess, now what the open seat will or who potentially should be placed for the open seat. I really don't have any process for how we're going to go about this tonight. So it's really just round robin, just an open discussion in terms of what they like tonight, if there's somebody that they preferred over the others, and then see if we can come to a consensus tonight. If not, then obviously, we have that time on Monday. But I would like to come to consensus tonight, but knowing that there's only six, we may have a 3-3 tie or something. That doesn't get us to that point. The other open question I do want to understand tonight, once we get through the... If we were able to reach consensus, is that that open question about whether or not we may change our minds on Monday night? So do we invite all four? Do we just invite one person? I didn't really think about that aspect of it, but I'd like to have discussion about that as well. So if anyone wants to start, Mayor Protam, go ahead.
I have a suggestion that might help us kind of cut through a little bit faster, maybe. And I have to confer with the city attorney on whether or not this is allowable. But if we just did an initial ballot written and had everybody put their candidates in order, one to four, that might give us an idea of where potential consensus lies as far as our top two candidates are concerned. And I think there's an exception in the sunshine law that would allow us to do an anonymous ballot, if I recall reading that section recently.
In general, well, we're in a study session, so we can't take a vote. And in general, you can't do a secret ballot vote of any sort. But let me double-check on that exception.
Okay. While the city attorney is looking at that, Joe has it over to you.
I think there's a... I'm not particularly opposed to that, but I think there's one step before that. And that's, you know, discussing the candidates' impressions from the interviews. To me, seems like a first step, because there may be something that one of us has seen or can synthesize in a way that will make an argument for some candidates, that kind of thing. I'd like a chance to just put it out there and let people weigh in on how they thought the interviews went.
Right. Yeah, I'm open to that as well. So, did you just volunteer yourself?
I guess I... Perhaps I did. First of all, these are all four fantastic candidates. And they clearly, all of them know the stuff. They are familiar with how government works. They're good, you know, good, positive members of the community. But for me, PJ really stood out at the top. I kind of ranked him with numbers. He was my highest ranked. But the thing that really stood out to me was that he had a familiarity with what's currently going on with city council and what is going on these next two months. He mentioned multiple times bringing stuff to bear regarding both the budget and Code Next. He's been watching council meetings. He's familiar with everything that's going on in the city. And frankly, I think he brings some real skills and assets to the city with his experience in engineering and infrastructure and those kind of things that are particularly relevant with the capital improvement, final decisions on CIP plan and budgeting. And frankly, I think his focus on walkability and infrastructure was also really helpful as well. I thought both Tina Prang and Brenda Hubka did really well in their interviews. And the only hesitation, as I've reflected on it, that I have about them is coming from... They're obviously very familiar with Code Next, but I wonder if they're not too familiar, and if any of that would bring some kind of conflict of interest or something with their experience on P&amp;Z. Sorry, and would bring any kind of conflict of interest. This is going to be one of the biggest jobs of the next two and a half months is doing Code Next. And I wouldn't want to put somebody in a position of having to sit through... You know, we're asking them to actually do the job. And if they aren't able to fully engage in the job because of voting on this on P&amp;Z and then coming to city council, I question that. Joel Moore was, you know, I thought he did fantastic as well. I really think his budget experience was really helpful, a really helpful history there as well on the Budget Advisory Committee. And this isn't any fault of his. He's had family stuff going on, but he hasn't been super engaged in the last few months, you know, he admitted to. So I think what we need at this point is time, is somebody who's ready to jump in and do the job. So that's kind of where I landed on him.
Thank you so much, Joe. Anyone else want to weigh in? Go ahead, Chelsea.
Happy to weigh in. What a great problem to have, four really excellent candidates. I feel really grateful for citizens who applied, and it's just great news for the city. This is a hard job, and for people who want to do it. And I think at least two of them mentioned that they're not planning to run in November. They're not in it for any kind of glory. It really did seem like there was a motivation for public service there, which I really appreciated. What's interesting about the candidates that we have before us, in my opinion, is they all bring like a very specific, unique skill set that is different from the others. And so we just have to decide, it's a choice point for us, which one of those things is going to be the most important to us? Is it, you know, experience on P&amp;Z? Or is it experience on the school board? Or is it a really strong, you know, budgeted legislative, nonpartisan staff experience? Or is it a really strong kind of construction, utility, engineer experience? And that's what's before us. PJ's also my number one. I just thought he was really excellent. And what I appreciated is that he continually referenced our strategic plan, how we make decisions, the vision of the city. He was the only one who mentioned multiple plans that the city has had. You know, he seemed the most well-rounded in his understanding of the job and the current work of the city. I also thought Brenda had some really great answers. She seems very well-informed about the... I also thought Brenda had some really great answers. She seems very well-informed about the current challenges of the city. And, um, I appreciated in Joel's application, his, and in his interview. His commitment to kind of non-partisanship, civil discourse, dialogue. As someone who also worked at the Capitol but was not on partisan staff, I understand that there's such a strong commitment to not being biased, really looking at it. And as someone who has drafted legislation for a decade, his ability to understand ordinances and the work that we're doing here feels really relevant. And then Tina Prang, I thought also did a great job. I didn't, like, I had quite as much from her answers as maybe I would have liked, or maybe what I got from some of the other applicants. But that's kind of how they felt for me.
Thank you, Chelsea. Go ahead, Jim.
I think on, on the first speaker, PJ. I'm going to have to bow out on that because I just did not, in all fairness, hear enough there. To make judgment or to rate it. So if, if we are going by. Our numbering system here. I think we've got to only count the five of you. Because I don't think I should rate him. Or could rate him.
Jim, I'm, I'm just wondering if, like, I really think you, it would be, you should be able to weigh in on all the candidates. I'm wondering if before Monday, if, since you were not able to hear, if you could go back and listen to the recording and see if you could.
I can do that.
Do that. I think, I mean, I really want, I, I think it's really important that we all weigh in on these candidates.
I can do that. I, I was thinking if we're going to try and do something tonight. I don't want to have to rate it. That's not fair. Okay.
Did you want to weigh in on the other three?
Yes.
In terms of just.
I was really impressed with all three of them, and I think Joel. Moore was, uh. Very impressive in that, in that he had said he wasn't looking for. A long-term position on council. I thought, okay, he's here for the short term and. He seemed pretty committed. Uh, Tina and Brenda. Both of them are really well-informed. They're, they're longtime. Residents of the community. And they're invested, very invested in the community, both of them, so. I like both of them.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Go ahead, Steve.
Well, as everyone has already stated, uh, this is a good problem for us to have, but the decision is made no less difficult. I think any four of these candidates could easily walk into the position and work well with us and with staff and with the community. And I think that's why these four candidates were interviewed tonight. Out of the applicant pool of nineteen applicants, we ended up with four people that we decided to interview. I. I have personally worked with both Joel Moore, uh, when I served on the Budget Advisory Committee. And with Brenda Hubka on various committee activities, so I know both of them personally and have spent a substantial amount of time around them previously. This was the first time I had met PJ Koenig, and the first time I had spent any substantive amount of time around Tina Prang. So I think. In large part, my, my first and second choice are colored by the fact that I know these people, both of them, quite well. I would, I, first choice, Joel Moore. I think, uh. As other council members have alluded to, he recognizes that the likelihood is that the seat will be two and a half months of service. While we are working on the Code Next process, and, and that's a huge component of what we'll be doing. Um, on an annual basis, we also need to approve the city's budget, and I think, um, Joel, having been through that process. Uh, as a member of the Budget Advisory Committee previously, is ready to step up and, um, and do that. Um, in regards to how involved he's been in the city previously, I thought that he acquitted himself well when he answered the, the question that the mayor asked. He said he visits next door, he, uh, takes a subscription to the Inglewood Herald, and he reads the city newsletter. Those are critical and important ways to receive information about what the council is doing. His familiarity with the city center redevelopment. Issues that will be ongoing as well. I think, um, speaks well. And then lastly, what Member Noonan Camp made reference to, the experience working in a nonpartisan. Way with, uh, as a member of, of legislative staff. And, uh, someone at legislative legal services. I think also gives an innate understanding of, of bureaucracy, of government. Of, uh, responsiveness and understanding the rules of the game from the start. So that's why I chose Joel. I think, uh, Brenda's experience speaks volumes. I appreciated her discussion on the Inglewood Unleashed. I know that that was a difficult, um, decision. I thought her anecdote about her career path and her time in Inglewood was, was funny and amusing. And I, I think, um, that while she has had a tendency, um, to be a bit of a firebrand on social media. Sometimes that's needed. Um, I'm probably guilty as charged myself. Um, and I thought that her answer to my question about what she would do in the future indicates a willingness and readiness to serve. And an understanding that serving on council is different than just being an activist in the community. Uh, the rules are different there, so. When I talk to, um, Joel and Brenda, any choice would be someone that I, I would stand ready, willing, and I think. Quite able to work with for the next two and a half months, if not longer.
Thank you, Steve. Rita, did you want to step in, or do you want me to say my words, or?
You can go ahead first.
Thank you. Yeah, what, what makes this so difficult is I, I, kind of the way that you finished, that I would be comfortable with either of these four candidates. Moving forward, what was surprising about Brenda is I, I didn't really put it together until she mentioned, but. She has always thrown herself into like the biggest committees. Or just the biggest issues that surround, uh, Inglewood. Obviously, the off-leashing would unleash the UDC, now planning and zoning, and she has always taken the biggest. You know, the most contentious, uh, issues that, that, that surrounds Inglewood. And done it on, you know, uh, and willingly did it, so. Yeah, I'm just very impressed with it. I was very impressed with their interview. Had it, I, I remember meeting Joel when I was at Lea's onto the B and C, uh, but we worked for a short time, so I came in kind of green to. What to expect from Joel, but I was super impressed with his, uh, with his interview tonight. Some of his demeanor, some of the way that he's looking to tackle this position is something that I. Do want to see moving forward, so I was very impressed with him. Same thing with PJ, had never met him until tonight. I was very impressed with his background, with his knowledge of the city. And. Yeah, just some of the things that he mentioned tonight were, were super impressive, and obviously, I've known Tina for many years. When she was, uh, part of the school board, as well as just, uh, um, over the years, uh, just serving the community in many different ways. I, I was, uh, very familiar with this, so I, I was very impressed, and tonight I'm actually still just. At a lot, so who's my one, two, three, four? Uh, I have a ranking here, but they're all just separated by a point or two. So, um, I would be happy with any of the four candidates tonight. One of the things that I'm kind of weighing is whether or not having. Two members mentioned that they were in it for just a short term. And two, I'm just assuming are probably looking at it for the long term because they didn't mention it. So what do I prioritize? Do I prioritize somebody that just wants to be here for the eight to ten weeks? Or am I looking for someone that would want to serve the community long-term? So either way, I'm very impressed with all four, and I would not be, uh. All four would represent the city well, so. Rita.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, I just, I want to say I've been really disappointed in the process. I guess I'd, I feel really badly for the other people that weren't chosen, and I feel badly. That we didn't set the process and the direction before it all came to pass, and then we decided. Because I think that there were some fairness issues. With all that being said, we're here where we're here. I think that, um, the interviews, um. Were good. I think we, um. I was very impressed with PJ and his understanding, um, of government and things like that. I actually enjoyed Tina Prang and Brenda Hubka's interviews because I got to know. Them a little bit better from that, even though I've known them. I would say that, that Joel Moore is my number one choice because of his understanding of the budget. When he was on the Budget Advisory Committee, he totally understood it. It will not take him any time to catch up on the budget. I do believe that. He, he didn't say he hasn't paid attention, I don't think, so much in the last seven months. For the two years that he was gone, he was saying, he, he understood that it was going on already before he left, but. With that said, I also agree with Councilmember Anderson. I think there possibly could be a conflict of interest with both, um, Tina Prang and Brenda Hubka, because they've already voted on Code Next. And I think that would be a huge problem. So with that said, um, of the people we've interviewed, Joel, Joel Moore, I think is my choice. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Member Russell. Uh, Mayor Protam.
I did receive some information earlier from the city attorney in regards to the. The probability or possibility that someone from P and Z who's already voted on the Code Next process would be appointed. I'm wondering if now would be an appropriate time for the city attorney to share that information with the public.
I believe that may be a. Maybe a good point. Go ahead, uh, city attorney now.
Uh, yes, uh, we do believe that if someone from P and Z that voted on Code Next and sat in on the public hearing and weighed the evidence. If they were appointed to city council, that they should not vote, uh, on the, the Code Next when it comes to city council. They already, uh, presided over a hearing, weighed the evidence, they already made a decision. So then for them to, to do it again, in what is essentially the appellate level. To revisit everything P and Z did and to revisit that decision. They, they could not be an impartial, uh, separate body that could then reweigh the evidence and make a new decision. So, um, it is our opinion that they would have to recuse themselves and, and not vote on Code Next.
Thank you so much, uh, city attorney Nels. Anyone else want to weigh in? I, I guess one of the concerns I have is that, Member Wood, where you weren't able to hear. Member, or, uh, Mr. Koenig's presentation or interview, I guess. So. Based on the, well.
Jim, could you just use your?
Oh, yeah, yeah, use the mic.
Said I can watch it tomorrow on YouTube. I think if. If I understand, what the city attorney just said was, uh, there could be and probably would be a conflict. And if that means eliminating. Prang and Hubka. Because of that, and Code Next is a big part of it. You know, what we're doing until the mid, mid-November. Based. Well, I can't even base it. I, I was very impressed with. Joel Moore. And. Until I hear. Tomorrow, the YouTube. Right, I. Don't have an opinion on PJ.
Thank you, Jim. Those are the two big issues coming forward for council here over the next eight weeks is the budget and Code Next. So at least for me, that does weigh in terms of how I prioritize the four candidates tonight. And I feel uncomfortable. Literally, they're separated by one point, Mr. Moore and Mr. Koenig. So for me, it's just that they're right there and, uh. You know, right now, I think Mr. Koenig would probably be, well, he is one point ahead, but I, I would, again, I'm, would be comfortable with either the two. I'm not hearing anything. I think, Member Ward, you said, or Mayor Protam, Member Russell, both said Mr. Moore as their first choice. And Jim, I believe you said, Mr. Moore, at this point is your number one, right? Without. Yeah, you can't say without any clarity, yeah. I think we might be deadlocked at this moment in terms of three-three. So I, I'm not sure if we're going to get to consensus tonight unless somebody is willing, well, I, I, I don't want to make that decision for Jim, so. I'd hate to go into. Uh, no, we could talk about it on Monday night, but, uh, go ahead, Mayor Protam.
I'll just state for the record right now that I am not willing to lend my consent to a tie vote. So in the event of a tie vote, my vote will change in order to ensure that we have a majority in favor of one candidate. That's, a tie is absolutely positively unacceptable to me.
Tie tonight or tie on Monday night?
On Monday night.
Yeah, exactly.
We go to decide. We will not be deadlocked. I will commit to the people that we will not be deadlocked unless it is a two-two-two deadlock. Which still, it would not be with my consent, so.
No, I agree with you on that as well, Mayor Protam. I, again, I am confident that any of these four candidates can do the job, so I will not be. There will be a decision made on Monday night, so. That may actually finish off the second question that I have in terms of who to invite for Monday night, but because we're not coming to a consensus tonight, it sounds like we will have to wait until Monday night.
But it does sound like it, um, based on what I'm hearing, it's probably either Joel, or should we invite all four just in case there's some?
No, I, I, based on what I'm hearing, it, it sounds like it's Joel or PJ tonight, so. Mayor Protam, your light's still on. Was there anything else? So city clerk, I know that we're making this a little bit more difficult come Monday night, but we're going to have to leave that portion blank on. Oh, no, just the top two, or just PJ and. And Joel. Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
I do have one process question based on what we're discussing right now. Uh, I'm wondering if we can move the discussion and decision to the beginning of the meeting after either the pledge or public comment. And that way we can swear in the new member as quickly as possible and get them on the job.
I would like to go down that route, uh, and, and do it before consent agenda.
The clerk is advising us that we have a special meeting, which is similar to a study session, so public comment will be a factor.
So there is no.
Public comment.
Okay.
No public comment, no consent, so it'd be right after swearing, okay.
That sounds like a fair process.
So does that mean there is only one topic for the special meeting?
There are two. We have a executive session that night as well.
Is, is that okay, city attorney, to have two topics? I thought we could only have one topic for a special meeting.
Oh, we can have more than one topic, but they each have to be designated ahead of time. So we, we couldn't add topics at the meeting. We have to clearly state what those topics are for special.
Okay, thank you.
So if I could understand this, we're still going to go through the study session items. First three or four items are going to be study session topics, then we'll talk about the vacancy, then we go into executive session. Am I understanding this correctly or no?
I'd like to build the vacancy at the beginning of the session.
Okay, so that, you want that to be the first topic to.
Yes, the new member could then fully participate in both the executive session and the study session.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anything else? All right, Jim, all eyes on you. You got five days. Okay. All right, everyone, um. Let me just make sure. All right, with that, everyone, I guess the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much for your time, and we'll see you all on Monday night. Have a great evening.